And have the roll call for the Woodland Park Planning Commission on August 13th, 2015.
If I could check with Dave to make sure he's-
We up and running?
Okay. Thank you. Mr. DeVoe?
Present.
Mr. Watson?
Here.
Mr. Hartsfield?
Here.
Mr. Penlin?
Here.
Ms. Probst?
Here.
Mr. Schrader? And Mr. Stannard?
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening with six members present.
If you would join us with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 23rd meeting. Do we have anybody that-
A motion to approve?
Second.
As me?
Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Request annual public hearings.
Chairman DeVoe, if I may, before we start this, I just need to share that I was a victim's advocate for seven years here in Teller County. I have no connections with the applicant, so I don't feel that there would be a conflict of interest.
One of the things we'll read now about that is that this is the time in which planning commissioners shall disclose any contact or relationship they may have had with the applicant. And furthermore, that that contact or relationship has not affected or biased their opinion of the case at this time, basically ex parte communication. I had a chance to talk to Bruce Cadwell at the church. All I simply did was clarify, this was before I realized it was quasi judicial. Anyway, all I said was, "Is this a family deal?" I said, "It's an apartment," and it was a family deal. So just verified what I already ran that report anyway.
I guess I should mention that I work for Help the Needy, and we work closely with the folks at the church and their storehouse ministries. I've been doing that for years. I don't think that colors my, well, probably colors my opinion, but that was, that's a relationship.
I need to disclose also that (laughter) I'm the president for Habitat for Humanity of Teller County, and the church provides us with office space for Habitat in the same building that we're discussing tonight, and I don't feel this will impact my decision-making process. Thank you.
We've already heard from Marty?
Yes.
Steve?
I got nothing.
Anybody else?
We can't recuse you. We'd have to adjourn.
Do you want to call the item?
Yes, let me read that. Woodland Park Community Church CUP 15-004, request for a conditional use permit, CUP, by the Woodland Park Community Church in the Community Commercial District for the change of use from office to lodging, to allow for the conversion of the basement of this unit into a temporary shelter on Lot 4, Jamestown Square, 700 Valley View Drive.
Thank you Chairman DeVoe and members of the Planning Commission. The applicant is here today. Jackson Peters is sitting here and will most likely speak tonight. Will be making a presentation on the application. Welcome to members of the public that are here as well. My name is Laura Palabino. I am the city planner. This is application number CUP 15-004. It is specifically at 700 Valley View Drive here in Woodland Park. It is lot number four in Jamestown Square subdivision. This particular subdivision is a condominium subdivision. The lot area of the portion of the building in question is 0.03 acres, or approximately 1,300 square feet. That is the square footage of the one condo unit that we are talking about, unit number four. There are four units in here, even though the church does operate all four of those units as one floor space, let's say, one leased area. The floor space for that one unit is proposed to be residential and currently it is office. The residential portion will encompass approximately 713 square feet in the basement. That is currently being used as office space right now. The office space above will remain as office space above for use by the Woodland Park Community Church. It is in the Community Commercial, the CC Zone District here in the jurisdiction of Woodland Park. The existing use is office use, which is an outright permitted use in the CC Zone District. The proposed use pursuant to Section 18.09.090, Section L2 of our matrix, of our use matrix, is a proposed use for lodging of 20 rooms or less. And in fact, the proposal is for a one-unit lodging facility. This map on the PowerPoint presentation shows the general location of the site in context with the city. The pink lines are the city boundaries. You can see Highway 24 here and Highway 67 going north. The site is in the north end of the city, just east of Highway 67, south of the golf course. And it's indicated by this blue dot here. This is a neighborhood map that shows some of the surrounding structures. For instance, this is the site in question, 700 Valley View Drive. This is Valley View right below it. This is the Woodland Park Community Church adjacent to it and to the east. This is the O'Keefe Ceramic Shop. This is the Tamarack Business Center, the post office, and the police department right there. So those are some of the landmarks in this area. And of course, the golf course is just a little bit northwest of here. The next slide is a bit closer in, and it shows again, this is the site in question. These are the four condominium units that are currently used as office, and the one unit that we are looking at tonight is the one furthest to the west, unit number four. This map also shows a very rough distance to some of the nearest residences and lots. So for instance, immediately to the north, the closest resident from structure to structure is approximately 240 feet measured off of Google Maps, so that's not a survey distance by any means. But approximately 200 to 240 feet is the nearest residence. And it's about the same distance, just a little bit more to the nearest residences to the south. These two lots are proposed to have buildings on them as well. So this just shows a general close-up view of the site. And again, coming off 67, going east on Valley View here is the driveway to get into the office complex, and the parking would be here and around the back. This is a zoning map. The site in question is this pink color, and again, it shows you the four units, and the one that we are most interested in is unit number four, which is furthest to the west. The zone in the red circle is CC, Community Commercial, and this map will show you the surrounding jurisdictions and the surrounding zone districts. So for instance, to the east in this yellow color is Suburban Residential Zone District, which is typically a single-family residential zone district. To the south and to the east, this brown color, is multifamily units, multifamily urban, I'm sorry. Those are the zone districts. So those allow for a little bit of a higher density type of development in those areas. And on the other side of Highway 67, you'll see some PUD zoning and you'll see some industrial zoning. The P is public, so parks, public land. And everything in black is the, the heavy line in black is the boundary for the city of Woodland Park, and everything that's painted white is within the jurisdiction of Teller County. So this border is very close to the city of Woodland Park and the Teller County boundary. This slide shows the assessor's photo of the site. Again, it shows the four condominium units, so each of these double doors is one of the units, and this is the unit that we're interested in. And again, we're only interested in the basement as far as this application is proposed. This is a picture captured from the driveway looking northwest towards the office complex in the winter. Here are some pictures taken just a few weeks ago. Again, this is the front of the entire office complex, and the building we are most interested in, the condo unit number four, is this one far, it's hard to see on this particular picture, but far to the left. And all of these other offices, this is the main entrance to the Woodland Park Community Church. So this is the front facade of the office complex. This is the rear, specifically the rear entrance to the basement of unit number four. So you would have to go down these stairs, and you can see it's very nondescript. There's nothing that will bring any attention to this entrance, and the applicant does not propose any changes to this exterior, apart from adding some security measures, which they will detail in their presentation. This gives you an idea of what the office space downstairs is currently being used for. It is a meeting space, and this is the interior of that space. It's a fairly well-kept room. This slide shows you again the site. This is the common property line, the common area for all four of those condominium units, and the parking space and the parking layout with the driveway coming off of Valley View Drive. Again, unit four is the westernmost unit that we are interested in, and only the basement of that unit. This, which was also included with your packets, shows the existing configuration of this basement unit. So it really is just one large general assembly room that the church has been using for some time now. And then on the right half of this, it shows you the remodel that will occur for this particular shelter to go in, and essentially, it's just adding a few walls, adding a bathroom space, moving that wall further to the north. You can see that they depicted approximately six sleeping spaces, two in this bed, oops, let me go back, there we go, two in this bed, one here with maybe a pullout for another sleeping person right there, and this could be a sofa bed. So part of the condition is six, no more than six people in this, based on what they've depicted in their application. Not a lot of changes proposed, certainly no changes to the exterior that would indicate in any way that there is a shelter here. So it's very minimal, very low impact. Staff did receive the application, did review it and analyze it with respect to Section 1821, which is the Community Commercial Zone District specifications and limitations. A lodging use is a conditional use that is approvable by the Planning Commission. Staff looked at things like the building heights, the front yard setbacks, frontage requirements, parking requirements, fencing, signs, sidewalks, and landscaping. And because there are no changes occurring outside, there are no requirements. They do comply with all the standards as if it were just being built today. But we do have to keep in mind that this is an existing building, and they're just changing the use in the basement. No changes to the exterior. Referrals were sent out to various agencies, including the city of Woodland Park, to the Utilities Department, to the Public Works Department, to the Police Department, to Economic Development, and to the Building Department. We also sent it out to exterior agencies such as the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, to IRE, Black Hills, Baja Cable, C-DOT, and Century Link, and had no comments from any of these and no concerns from any of these agencies. Public notices pursuant to the municipal code were distributed. We did send out adjacent property owner notices to everyone within 150 feet of the site boundary. We did put a poster in the driveway with a published notice of tonight's hearing, and we did publish the notice in the Pike's Peak Courier of tonight's hearing. And again, we received no written concerns from the public. We did get some questions, and some people did come and look at the application, but we received nothing in writing and certainly no concerns. Staff does review this according to the written and established conditional use permit standards. There are 11 of these standards. They are in Section 1857-040A of the municipal code, and I'll go through them very briefly right now. So the first standard is need. Is there a need for this type of shelter? And staff does believe that there is a need, and the police department even mentioned that there is a need for this type. I believe this is the first shelter to officially come in, in the city of Woodland Park. Number two, any impacts to public health and welfare? Staff does not believe there are any impacts to public health and welfare, and the application included an operational plan that details how this shelter will operate, and that was done in compliance with any concerns and questions staff had. There are no impacts to public health and welfare. Staff does not believe there are any impacts to property values. Staff believe that it does harmonize with the neighborhood and with the area, especially with no changes to the exterior, and especially with the operational plan that the applicant is proposing. Staff does believe it fits in with the city plan, that it complies with all regulations in place, that traffic is substantially reduced with this change in use, that there is no change to any drainage patterns, that water, sewer, and wastewater have been accommodated for and are feasible based on this change in use, that there are no hazards or new hazards that would be introduced with this, and that the architectural design will not change in any way. Staff does find substantial compliance with all of these 11 standards and doesn't recommend approval with conditions. Staff recommends to move, to recommend approval of a lodging use in accordance with Section 1809-090L2 and Section 1857-040B of the municipal code, subject to the following three conditions. One, prior to opening the emergency shelter to any occupant, the applicant shall receive approval from the Building Department for the change of occupancy, and approval of applicable building, fire, plumbing, mechanical, and/or other permits, codes, and regulations, including the issuance of a certificate of occupancy if required. Condition number two, the emergency shelter shall be occupied by no more than six people at one time and for no longer than one week, seven nights, at one time by the same individual or group. Condition number three, the emergency shelter shall not be offered to any person required to be in a jail, a correctional facility, a halfway home, or medical treatment facility, clinic, or institutional home, nor shall it be offered to persons addicted to illicit drugs. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, are there any questions of staff?
We'll cover that after the staff or the applicants made their presentation.
Okay.
So you're subject to coming back again. Would somebody like to represent Judge Peters? Come on up. Have to call you that, just so many years, I'm sorry. Kind of goes with the territory.
It does. Good evening. Again, my name is Jackson Peters, and I work now with the Storehouse Ministry of the Woodland Park Community Church. At the table with me is Mr. John Holsher, who is an architect, and he is the chairman of our Board of Elders, and Mr. Chuck Severance, who is an architect and has been helping us with the plans and the application. As you know, we're seeking a conditional use permit to allow us to convert the basement of the storehouse ministry that is in the church offices to a temporary emergency shelter, as noted by your staff, who, by the way, have been so kind and generous and helpful. I sure appreciate everything you all have done to make this process easier for me. This is my first time before the Planning Commission. As the staff noted, there are no emergency shelters that we know about in Teller County. And when the Board of Elders made the basement office available to the storehouse ministry, we tried to figure out what would be the best use of that facility. It's a nice basement, nice facility. And we set up a meeting with all of the helping agencies that I'm pretty much familiar with in Teller County. And by the way, the storehouse has a priority of trying to partner wherever possible with other helping agencies. We find that working with others, we can do so much more. And even, we had about 20 people around the table in the basement, and I invited those people to a pizza lunch to talk about how we could best use the basement. And we discussed a number of ideas, and the idea that was closest to a consensus that we identified as the greatest need from our discussion was a temporary emergency shelter. And indeed, that has been my personal experience, that that really is a need here. So that is our intention. We want to create a very small shelter. It couldn't be a smaller shelter. It's one room that we're going to convert to a motel-like-looking room, a great room with a bathroom. We'll have one individual or one family at a time that will come in, stay for a maximum of seven days, probably less than seven days. Our target group, the people we're going to focus on, are single parents with children. In working the storehouse, what we've discovered is that the people that come to our door, the people in need, are mostly single parents with children, often mothers with children. They seem to be the new poor in America, where the other spouse is not contributing to the welfare of the family, and we find a lot of those people in distress. And also, it is our practice now, when people come to us in our, sort of in an emergency homeless situation, what we do is give them the money or pay for two nights in a motel somewhere in Teller County. There are two agencies that do that. We do that, and the Aspen Mine Center does that at the other end of the county. Yes, sir?
Help the Needy does it too. Help the Needy does it too.
I stand corrected. Help the Needy does it also. I think all of us would like to do better than just providing a couple of nights in a motel room. We'd also like to spend some time with these folks that are in need and provide services, help them access resources, and move to a better place. And we hope to do that through this facility, to have people for up to a week that we will assign a team to, a team of volunteers from the church, a team that will be trained, that will know about existing resources, have some understanding of the problems of homeless people, will counsel with them, try to identify what their needs are, help them access resources, and within seven days, try to move them in a better direction to a better place than just two nights in a motel. Security is an issue. We have had our church security staff take a look at our proposed operation. I met with Chief Larson, who has now moved on just recently, and the second-in-command. They met in the basement and talked with us about security. We have some security ideas, kind of formulated a plan on how we're going to address security. The issues that we have with regard to security is that what's going on, the people we bring in will be very close to our office staff right upstairs. We also are going to be having victims of domestic violence come in, and it may be that an angry husband or boyfriend might show up, something like that. And we're going to be prepared for that. We're going to have protocols and emergency plan to address that. Chief Larson okayed our having an emergency button in the shelter that would go directly to the police department if we had a problem. There are going to be two doors, two solid doors between the outside and the inside of the shelter. And again, the people, the guests that we bring into our shelter are not going to be alone. There will be a team assigned to them that will work with them and be with them during their short stay. As you can see from the pictures, our basement is very unobtrusive. It's almost invisible to the public. It's the back door, and we're not going to change that. It is my belief that the way we'll be operating the shelter with one family or one person at a time, that will be virtually invisible to the public. I don't think people even know what we're doing there. The one change we will make outside is we are going to have a motion-activated light during the evening hours. We're going to have a motion-activated camera, and we're going to sign that says this area is under video surveillance. So we're going to try to be proactive and do this right. We are going to make a commitment to do this well. We are a Christian church, and we believe we're called to show loving kindness and help people in need in this community, and that's what we endeavor to do, and we will endeavor to do it well. And I will commit to you that we will do this well. I would be happy to address and try to answer any questions you might have with regard to our operation. Mr. Severance can address any technical issues, and if you have issues that require real wisdom and insight and perspective, John Holsher is our man.
The groups that you will have helping these people, will that be a 24-hour operation or just during the day?
Just during the day. We will not have 24-hour supervision or a guard, that sort of thing. What I envision is probably most people will come in on the weekend, and the day following the evening they come in, our team will meet with them, meet with them regularly, and help them.
Will they have access to that team 24 hours, even though someone's not present?
Yes, they will be able to reach our team leader by phone. You know, one of the scenarios that we hope to address, and I think occurs with some regularity, is that even in the winter months, the law enforcement officers in Woodland Park and in Teller County will be traveling around late at night and see a car parked in a parking lot, and they'll pull up, and there'll be a family sleeping in the car sometimes on bitterly cold winter days. And so you ask the question, what does the officer do with that person? Where does the person go? And we hope to be a resource. We hope, we will have an on-call person every night who will take a call from a law enforcement officer and say, "We've got a family that's sleeping in a car. Do you have a place for them?" And we'll have a team that will come out at night, will speak with them, will ask the law enforcement people to run warrant checks, and we'll look at the situation and see if it fits our mission, and hopefully, many of those people will have a place to stay and get out of the cold.
Okay, I'll give my questions-
Yes, ma'am.
-having been there for seven years. I understand you're going to do it like a hotel room-
Yes, ma'am.
-but you have to remember, you're talking, part of your people are people who have just been victimized. And I would encourage you to make it more warm than a motel room. The children need something more than a hotel room. I know it's warm, it's a roof over their head, but if they've been a victim of domestic violence, they've seen their mother or father very ugly situations, they need more than that. So I would encourage you to think about that and not just making it a motel room for someone to be put into, to make it more a little homie.
And we will endeavor to do that. The distinction of calling it a motel room is to distinguish it from something that looks like an apartment, because this is going to be a short-stay facility, and we're going to have a guest agreement and let them know that they are not tenants, but they are guests, and it's a temporary facility.
Right. And I understand, but just-
Sure, I get your point.
I've been, you know, I've seen what has the trauma in doing it.
We right now have one of our teams that is going to work the shelter if things work out for us, that is going through domestic violence training beginning next month. They'll be working with TESSA, and we hope to have, when we have domestic violence victims, a team that is TESSA-trained.
I've been through the TESSA training.
Okay.
Been through a lot of trainings over seven years.
I bet you have.
The other concern that I have, and you did address it a little bit, is the security. The fact that they're going to be walking down the side of the building around to the back, that's a concern-
Yes.
-because you do get irate spouses or boyfriends, girlfriends, or whatever, that are easily, they're stalked. And usually, in my experience, when we've had to pull a family out of a home, their life has been threatened, they're in extreme danger. And now you're going to put them walking around the back of a yard in a very dark, very dark area. I used to live back over on Apache Trail. That's a concern for me for security. I think that, I mean, having the motion sensor light, okay, that's good. The camera, that's after the fact. And so I'm not quite sure what can be done about that.
I would suggest it does two things. After the fact, it is evidence that could be used to prosecute someone who is there causing problems or who may be violating restraining order, but if you know you're on camera, you are much less likely to do something stupid. And that's why we would have a sign and a light and an obvious camera, so that if you decide to do anything here, Buster, you're on camera from point one. It would be lovely if we could have a security guard. We can't afford a security guard, so we're doing what really is affordable. There will be the automatic security button that will go to the police department. We will have the room very secured. We will have a team ready to respond. We are very close to the police department.
Right.
But you are correct. It is, and it kind of works both ways. It's, where it is is sort of secluded, so people won't be aware of it, but that works the other way. It's not a public place where a lot of people are around, and your point is well-taken.
Yeah. Well, you know, you try to, there's several communities that have safe houses that they're best kept secret, you know? Nobody knows they're there, they're so isolated. In a small community like ours, news travels fast, you know? So I can almost guarantee you that people will know where that house is.
Very well, maybe.
You know, I mean, it's just that, and-
And we're having a public proceeding today.
Right. And it's all on camera, and it's all on-
Yeah, I don't know how to avoid- Yeah, I don't know how to avoid that.
Yeah. And a restraining order is only a piece of paper. That's just a piece of paper, unfortunately. So I just...
I issued a restraining order to a lady who worked at City Market on Thursday, and she was dead on Friday. I know precisely what you're talking about.
Yeah. It is, it is just a piece of paper, and unfortunately, the honest people respect it, the not-so-honest people don't, and we've seen it happen. Okay. That's right.
Steve?
I've got no questions, other than to reveal that, not realizing that Judge Peters is representing this proposal. He and I worked together on the aquatic project, so I don't think...
Continue to work together.
It will influence my judgment.
If I could just say one more thing, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for what you're doing, because it has been such a huge need in this community to find someplace for these, particularly the domestic violence, and getting them out of harm's way, and getting those children out of harm's way. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have an assessment process before you, I mean, do you evaluate these people before you put them in the shelter? Because I know with Hope the needy, we get some people that are homeless, but we just assume they transit Teller County as opposed to stay in Teller County.
How much evaluation we can do will depend entirely on the circumstances. For talk about people that come to our door during the daytime, we will have some time to do those things. If we get a call in the middle of the night from a law enforcement officer, and we're meeting them there, our initial evaluation will be somewhat limited. What we, at this point, intend to do is to request warrant checks from the law enforcement agency, and do computer background checks by our staff as best we can, and then to do a thorough interview with folks and find out who they are, where they're from, what their circumstances are. And we're going to give full discretion to the team that shows up on the scene, perhaps in the middle of the night. If they feel uncomfortable for any reason, if their senses, something is wrong about that, they will have discretion to say, no, you're not coming into our shelter, and alternatively can pay for what we do now, two nights in a motel, if they think that is appropriate.
On if it's domestic violence, Teller County has a victim assistance program, and the victim's advocate would be meeting them before they ever got to a safe house, and it would be cleared.
I guess my point is that not all the people that appear at our doors...
Are what they appear to be.
Are what they appear to be. That's correct.
Yes, sir.
And it takes some evaluation...
Yes, sir.
...to understand, you know, where they're coming from. Biggest thing is, well, we can't help you here, but you can go to the police department, and that usually uncovers a host of things.
And we're not going to accept everybody who asks into the shelter.
Judge Peters, you've had people appear before you, not what they, what they appear to be for a lot of years.
It's happened a few times.
It's a few times.
I had one question.
Yes, sir.
One concern is that this is in the basement, and therefore we have stair access to it. Is there any concerns with providing accessible spaces, handicapped persons being able to use the facility?
I haven't, hasn't crossed my mind as yet. Curiously, our office is handicap accessible, but our basement is not. So your answer is, we do not have...
The concern is, if they were doing a motel, let's say, a certain number of the units would have to be accessible to comply with ADA standards and such.
Yeah. And I think if we ran into that, we would go back to, we'll help you with a motel. Be the best we could do right now.
Do you have to modify the building for, you know, most people, they have a basement in their home, or they have a bedroom in their home. They have to have a window that opens up to emergency, to get out for a fire, that type of thing. There has to be an exit of some kind, and maybe your architect can address that.
I'll check and address that.
Yeah, that was one of the conditions, that we meet all the current building codes, so we'll meet that.
Okay, all right.
One of the big expenses for us is the sprinkler system in that one unit there, which is required.
Okay.
So that was the, a giant hurdle financially to get over...
Thanks.
...right now. But yes, we'll be meeting the building code, of course, for that.
Do we have any questions for Lori from staff? Anybody have? If not, we'll open the public comment. Okay? Do we have anybody signed up to speak on the list?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anybody here that wants to that didn't sign up?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we will close the public comment. It's a little early for rebuttal from the applicant. Planning Commission, any final questions? Okay, what we'll do then, and let me preface one thing that we're to do. Our role here is not all of those conditions. Our role here are the 13 items of the criteria, and does it justify, or does it meet the conditions to go from office to lodging? We all have a lot of questions, how it's going to work. They're going to get a lot more people, asking them a lot of questions about how this is going to work with the different organizations and what they have to go through. What I commend you for, there's nothing like that here. And it's a start, and it's a small start, but it's a start. And it will, there will be times when you will be tested on this. And I relate a small story that I have to relate. Back where I came from in Indiana, our church decided to go out and get people and help them. We picked up a young man that was on the prison farm system on trustee, and we took him to church every Sunday morning. We're riding in our car, I have these kids that are four, five, and six years old. One of my sons, maybe he's a little older than that, in fact, it was Jason, said, why are you in here? What did you do? I killed my dad with an axe. Not as they appear to be. But he was an okay guy. It was just, some people do those things, but... You will be tested, but that's good. And there will be times when you have to correct that, and that's good too, because somebody's got to start it, and I commend you guys for trying to do this and get this started, because it's a big challenge. Based on that, we need to... Any deliberation? Any questions about the criteria? Anybody have that? If not, we encourage a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion. Do you want me to spell it out? I would make the motion to approve CUP 15-004 with the recommended end conditions, the three conditions.
Second. Second. Any more discussion?
Thank you. Debo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Penland?
Yes.
Probes?
Yes.
And Standard?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. This will move forward to City Council's docket on first reading next Thursday on the 20th, and setting the public hearing for September 3rd.
Good luck.
Good luck. I'll offer my services if you need it.
Go accept them.
Okay.
We'll move on to reports. I really don't have anything specifically. Anybody else have something they would like to talk about?
Well, I was just handed the flyer since I didn't get a packet, and it's, it's great. What, how are you planning to distribute this?
We are, we gave the flyer to Rick Circa, who is our code enforcement officer, and he, at his discretion, is able to hand them out to any resident, business, or otherwise in the city of Woodland Park, and he has already handed out, I would say, over 20. He's handed out quite a few, and he reports back to me, because his office is right next to mine, and he's like, I had a good response on this from, you know, this particular person. So I think the word's getting out there, and we're using Rick as our...
You're going to post it on their website?
We haven't. That's a great idea.
Yeah. I mean, I would think the more people we could get it out to, you know, even hanging, putting them around town. Because even though it doesn't say, you know, you have to do this, people see that and think, oh, well, maybe, you know, we should do, but yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Getting clipped isn't a bad idea.
Yep.
Anything else? Any other reports? I'm sure our planning director has some.
Yes, thank you. In your packets, we included the draft memo of the Planning Commission's 2016 budget priorities, and because you did such a nice job of distributing your priorities, or clustering them, there are 17 action items out of the comprehensive plan that are moving forward to the City Council. I wanted to get any feedback that you might have. I did add a last final paragraph with an emphasis on the need to increase code enforcement, and specifically about weed control. So I hope that captured your last discussion about those items that are most of your interests. If, in the past, we have, if three out of the seven commissioners chose a action item that made the list, if we were to eliminate those three votes, then we would only have six. But I did want to ask you if you'd like for this to move forward as is, or if you have some discussion related to it.
I have one comment on item 10. How do we, I know that's the way it's written, expand the outdoor lighting standards, but how do we get the point across to the City Council that we would like to see, at least some of us would like to see, the model code adopted?
You could, we could add a sentence to that item 10 that would emphasize that, and maybe we put it in italics.
Okay, that'd be good. Because that's a little more definitive than just expand the outdoor lighting standards.
Yeah, for example...
Right.
...a future consideration and adoption of the model code.
Right, you know, to expand on that, the dinosaur museum...
Right.
Put in a new, put in a new sign. They put in a new digital. It's really bright. I don't see it dimming down at night. What, what, what happened there?
It's getting worse.
That's a sign ordinance issue, which is independent of lighting.
Yeah. And we're going to work with Steve to go back out and do some measuring. He still has the tools.
The doohickey, yeah.
Yeah.
Still be a good, good one to measure, really. I mean, because, boy, that thing's bright during daytime.
It is. It's blinding.
And the treeboulds did get a reface for that sign, so we did issue that based on complying with our code. Problem with our code is that it's very generous on the amount of nits, so we can work with the treeboulds.
Can we do something to...
Change that?
Improve our code?
We could. Whenever we tinker with the sign code, it's going to be a little controversial, so, but if we can do maybe some very targeted amendments, there are three things I would like to change in the sign code right now, after five years of implementation. So maybe we should have a work session at our next meeting and talk about that, so that I can start drafting those changes.
Steve, one thing that you can do in your spare time, if you wanted to, is take that little thingamajig.
A little, oh, you see, he's, I'm talking to the doohickey.
It's a doohickey. That's a technical term.
If you could spend a little bit of time of testing them. And for example, the Catholic Church's new sign, I don't even find that, it's almost just right during the day, but it's, the net's got to be totally different on that than what's on at the...
Right. Now, initially, I actually had made a set of measurements around town. There've been a bunch of signs added since then, but we have something to start with, at least.
But I think if they have something we can prevent for somebody...
The one at Page is really bright.
These are the ones that are in compliance, and the majority of them are fine, as long as we have this kind of a standard, that kind of stuff. I think that has more credence to getting...
Yeah, and if we had some examples like that, we could, as this, you know, if a modification is being considered, we could say, if you go around town, these are what would be acceptable, and these might not be acceptable, and so people can actually go and see.
Do the one at Gold Hill North, because that one that...
Just make sure you measure the flashing stop sign.
And I did, and before I did measure our own streetlights, which are one of the biggest sinners.
Okay.
Oh, my.
I'm sorry.
Any other input on your, the memo?
The more we suggest, the better chance, some of them get a chance of passing. We limit it to four or five. Give them some choices.
Okay, so 17 is good, and you may have noticed I bolded the subject of each one. Because, you know, it's, I really think somebody will glance through this, at least they'll pick out the topics.
Yeah, I think it was good. I liked it, the way it was put together. You wanted to talk about circulation.
I do. We had...
At least I think you did.
Yes. The traffic circulation study is moving along nicely. Last week, there was a stakeholders' meeting, or two weeks ago, and our consultant took the recommendations from the public meeting and the first stakeholders' meeting, and put them together into a comprehensive list of items for alternate routes and other improvements. And those were mapped onto the city map, and so this was, and then they were evaluated. And those evaluations dealt with whether it's the city jurisdiction, the timeline, timeframe to implement, the ease of implementation, whether it achieves the project goals, and then just a simple feasible or not feasible. So from that list of 22 items, then it was boiled down to about half as many. And there was another evaluation done that had criteria about whether it improves traffic circulation or flow locally or regionally, improves safety for vehicles or for pedestrians, the cost, sort of a magnitude of cost, enhance access to business, right-of-way acquisition, or ability to implement. So once those criteria were evaluated, then there were about four top alternate routes or improvements, two local streets to help distribute traffic throughout town, and then two areas from other improvements that sort of floated to the top. At the stakeholders' meeting last Thursday, we talked about the, this evaluation system, these items, and just in general, to move forward to another public meeting. That public meeting will be either September 22nd or 23rd. We're nailing down the date right now. And I wanted to be able to share this with all of you, so that you can be sure to attend the public meeting, and that you can see the work that has been going into these evaluations. We hope that we can find three or four doable projects within the city that can be done in the next two to three years, that will help the circulation in small scale. This is not about changing Highway 24 dramatically. That would be millions and millions of dollars, and a very long, long-term solution, so... But I think this has been good. We're looking at pedestrian and vehicle safety, and trying to enhance businesses. So I'll distribute this to you, and John was able to attend the stakeholders' meeting, so he's been at all of them. so he's been at all of them.
When you read them, there are some that are just kind of wacko, I'm sorry. They just, they just are, and you realize, we're not going to put a roundabout by McDonald's.
A blank.
Roundabout. A roundabout. It's going to be real tough on a US Highway forty to get the semis to go in circles coming up the hill.
US Highway twenty-four, roundabout.
Well, yeah, US Highway twenty-four. That's really tough to do. Somehow, I don't think the government and CDOT's going to let that happen. But there's other good things in there that are good, but you just have to kind of go through them and realize that CDOT is a stop sign. No, no, we can't do that. No, no, that isn't there. No, but we've got to work with them anyway. We have to work with them. And they have their parameters with what they call lane miles, and they can't, and I think I talked about that once before, but yet they're listening to us and they're going back, and they will try some different things to see if it's possible. It's all expensive, but there are some ideas in there that aren't so bad, there really aren't, and you really need to look at those, because coming out of all the absurd, but Norman, that's not wacko, find another word.
I love wacko.
Anyway.
Wacko sounds good.
Okay, but anyhow, what I'm, what I'm saying is, even though there's a bunch in there you know you won't use, there's some in there, we'll refine it down, that will help what we're doing for circulation. And you just got to start out that way until, as you, as you filter this thing down. I think some good will come out of this one, it's all, all done and done. It will. We'll make some changes that'll help that.
Okay. Last thing I have is, we do have our monthly report on your desk as well, and we will have a meeting on the twenty-seventh of this month. There is a case, it has now been posted and advertised, that is the Best Western Hotel that is being proposed at Gold Hill Square South, and that is an amendment to their planned unit development for the Best Western Hotel.
They presented that initial concept to the DDA in a public meeting, so it's, it's, it's available, and it's interesting, and we'll be talking about that in a couple weeks.
So what's the new restaurant coming up?
The new restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Jimmy John's will be opening next week, we understand.
The eleventh didn't work.
No.
No, I went by there on the eleventh.
So did we.
No, you didn't.
There's always some last-minute things that happen.
To the ride of Starbucks.
The ride of Starbucks?
Right through.
The lot next to Starbucks.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard anything about that.
Anything you'd like to share?
No, there was a discussion recently about a restaurant going in there, but we couldn't talk about it yet because it was proprietary information or whatever it was.
Oh, it's the last meeting?
Sounds like it may still be.
It probably must still be.
Sally knows nothing. Next question?
No.
Anything else?
No, we're good.
Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Or adjourn.
Thank you.
So you're disavowing that discussion last week, I mean, last meeting, huh? Oh, it was. That's what I was...